I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, August 21, 2017. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Decanter's absent. Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Present.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. Hawkeizer?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
And Mr. Menon?
Here.
Juanne Alson?
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. Could you please stand before the presidential agents?
Presidential agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Holliday. This brings us to a session of public comment. If there is anyone in the audience that cares to address this committee, could you please step forward, state your name and address, and try to keep your comments to about two minutes? Yes, sir?
I'm at Allen and Mullen Street.
Could you step forward a little, Brian, so we...
Yes, sir.
Thanks so much.
I went to a meeting today at Brezner Hand for the start school later, which is on tonight's agenda. It was the second one. I believe it's the only school that's done more than one. The Mullen had one last week, and I don't know if high schools had any meetings. No, I'm sorry, the Knoc was last week. The Mullen, I believe, has had none. The Doris High School. So there were a couple of things on here. One, all of us who are actually here and have the start school later proponents want to make sure that the school committee as a whole realizes that this is still something we're getting done, not something we're trying to find excuses to get around. As far as I can tell, the Brezner's the only school with any real problems that involves before school care. But there are some things that it doesn't, I don't think it's any really their problem to figure out. Like, will the building be open longer, a half an hour either end increase building costs? That's really up to the district. It's not up to C.A. Davis. But there was one thing that was good. Charwell said, hey, we don't care, we can just ship for 30 minutes. That was it. So they had no, that's the only thing that apparently there's no issues with. That's it. I just want to make sure everybody here knows that they're supposed to be dealing with the principals that are getting this working, not finding a way to not have it work. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you. Consent agenda, do we have warrants, Mr. Menon?
We do. I move the following named bills amounting in the aggregate of $193,284.4 be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $9,168.58 be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next up on our agenda is the interview of the candidate, Ben Fraschera. Thank you for coming. For Whittier Voc Tech, as you know, we have two candidates for that position for this coming term. One is Joseph Spalding, who we met several weeks ago in an interview, and tonight we would like to give that same opportunity to Ben. So Ben, I'd like you to come up and join us at the table, and welcome.
Thank you for having me. Sorry, I was a little late.
Not a problem.
Actually, we just in time.
Right. I was just, I was going to say, we're going to skip the next item on the agenda. Ben, could you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking this position for Whittier and what you think you can bring to the Whittier Board and to Newburyport as our representative?
Sure, sure. So I can just pass out one copy of my resume if you want to look at that maybe after the meeting or while I'm talking, whatever. So about myself, I grew up in Newburyport. I went to, what was the Belleville School and the Knoc and then NHS. So I grew up here. After school, I went to, after NHS, I went to Worcester Polytech to do mechanical engineering. It was very practical focused education. I had learned how to weld and machine before I left there. And after school, I worked in Newburyport on the industrial park for a few years at Offal Abell and applied that knowledge I had there. After that, I went to work in Woburn, where I work now, and I worked there for 20 some odd years or so at a place called Lightron, which makes aerospace cooling equipment. So my work there is very focused on, I'm in charge of engineering, but it's a manufacturing focused job. So we're doing a lot of brazing, welding, CNC machining, sheet metal fabrication, HVAC work, that kind of stuff. So, you know, we, you know, one of the things that limits our ability to grow is the shortage of high school labor. So we can't, you know, we had this issue this year, we couldn't hire enough CNC machinists so it'll prevent us from adding a second ship, prevent us from shipping a certain number of dollars. So it's really, you know, these are good paying jobs, you know, they're $25 entry level to 45 on the high end, you know, if folks get more experience. So it's good work, we need a lot of people doing it. And so, you know, my, you know, my manufacturing experience plus my experience getting an MBA kind of made me think more about how I can make a difference in the company. Certainly, you know, adding high school labor as a part of that. So when I heard about this opportunity, I was really excited about it. So I think in terms of, you know, what I know of Whittier, certainly I knew a lot of folks that came here, you know, from my neighborhood who studied cosmetology or HVAC or whatever, and they're doing great now, you know. And I think that I would like to, in terms of what I could offer, sort of my background is in manufacturing, right? So it would be looking at the curriculum that Whittier has now and trying to, where I have contact, sort of bring industry in and saying, okay, we have this curriculum that's pretty good, very good, how can we broaden it and deepen it a little bit, right? Broaden it by bringing in new technologies. You know, I noticed that you, that Whittier got a grant in March to add some, an engineering lab and things like that. If there's other technologies there that we could add, you know, 3D metal printing, there's some, some advanced technologies that the aerospace industry wants, it would hire for if technicians knew how to do it. It's many, you know, I don't want to sort of bore you with the details, but when I looked at what was on the website, it's a lot of good stuff, but there's some things there that we could hire for if we had that skill set right now. For the existing technologies that are listed there, some of the software and computer controllers and stuff could be refreshed to what industry uses today more frequently. So we hire people that run CNC machines and the controllers you guys list or the Whittier references are a little out of date, and that's, that's fine, but if we could teach to the latest, that would be more appropriate.
Always.
More appropriate, always, yes. So I'm sure that's part of the normal curriculum development process, but maybe I could add a little more industry context and perspective that in the manufacturing area that would be beneficial. So, so I just want to, you know, contribute, want to sort of help the community, you know, since I can't find the people I need to hire now, you know, why not hire them from Whittier? So.
You're not alone, Ben. We certainly have other companies who are, you know, working with on the job training and are, when they're having a similar issue with machinists in the business park. And he actually won the Pined Institute Award for his work on on the job training, which made me sort of laugh because I feel like we're going back in time in terms of that circular, circular piece where we used to do all the time on the job training, and then that sort of went away, and now all of a sudden there seems to be a need. I know internships are very, very big at Whittier, you know, for their particular juniors and seniors class, so.
Yeah, I think that's something that, you know, we could talk about, you know, we, when I, at my time at this, at Lightron, we, it wasn't all my doing, but there was, we really dramatically increased the co-op program for engineers. And so the same thing applies to the skilled trades, getting them firsthand experience is critical, you know. So we could put them in welding, sheet metal fabrication, HVAC, and then maybe they'll have a job when they're done. So that's the, that's the objective, obviously.
Any questions for Ben? Mr. Menon?
Yeah, hi, Ben. Thank you very much. I'm not necessarily expecting an answer to this, but one of the, one of the issues that we've struggled with for a long time is, is sort of the attitude, you know, that, well, it sort of goes something like this, well, there's always Whittier. Whittier had been seen for a very long time in this community as a, you know, as a sort of a place of last resort. And that has really, we've worked very hard to change that. Whittier has worked very hard, they never were that, but they've worked very hard to change that perception. How do you see you fitting, yourself fitting into helping that change and seeing Whittier for what it is, which is an incredible opportunity and for, for kids here in Newburyport?
Yeah, you know, I'm not, I'm aware of what you're talking about, you know, because I come up through the school system and so on. So I think that it comes down to what the school's brand is, you know? What is the marketing of it? What is the motto of it? You know, whenever I read the mission statement, it has to do with, you know, meeting the educational needs of the communities we serve kind of thing. Well, okay, but could it be, you know, the cutting edge of the needs of the community? Or could it be, could we rephrase it such that, you know, people, when they hear Whittier, they think of, you know, getting a job in an area where it's in demand? You know, that's, that's the objective, right? It's, it's more practically focused. And so I think that if you can certainly change the branding of it, that's one thing, but also promote these partnerships, you know? Okay, X number of students went to work in these community, in these businesses, and now they have a job, you know? That's happening, and, but there's not as, you know, when you do a Google search, which I did, you didn't, I don't find a lot of it. And, you know, maybe that's a little bit of savvy kind of Google placement sort of things, you know? You have to promote what you sell, basically, in the best way possible. And so, you know, you don't, if you want to change your brand, you have to rebrand yourself, you know? And so, you know, I would, I would think you'd want to talk to the stakeholders, you know, certainly the towns, the businesses, the students, and say, well, what do we think this is, you know? What do we want to be in five years? And then that needs to be the mission statement. And it has to be somewhat more specific, I would think, than meet the educational needs, da-da-da.
Sort of changing culture is very challenging.
Oh, yeah.
And it sounds like you have a pretty good understanding both of the challenges and how to go about dealing with them.
Yeah. Certainly, the timeframe can't be artificial, you know? Let's be a different school in a year, you know? It takes, could take many, many years or as much as a decade to fully change the perception, but you have to start somewhere. You have to start with what do we want to be and what are the differences this year and next year and the year after that will close the gap of what we are today and what we want to be, you know? So.
Yeah, let's tell. Thank you.
Mr. Hawkeizer?
I'm going to ask you almost the same.
Another unanswerable question?
No. It's almost the same question, but a very different spin on it.
Okay.
Because I'm nervous about tech schools rebranding.
Okay.
Because I've been now to, at work, I'm an assistant principal at Mullen, so I've been to a few tech school, like, eighth grade night things there, and Whittier came here to talk to us last year, and the theme across the events were, we're trying to add AP classes. And we're trying to look for, add academic rigor to rebrand the tech schools, so make them more appealing to a wider range of students than historically. The problem with that is that the kids we have signing up for AP Chemistry and Latin III are doing just fine.
Yep.
And they are doing exceptionally here. And I'm not sure they want to weld in the industrial park, not that there's anything wrong with that, if that's what you want to do. But it seems to me very focused, in a very focused way, that the tech schools are trying to become more of an academic academy than the tech schools historically have been. And so, like, I know when I try to get my eighth graders into tech schools, the questions are, well, what's your attendance rate? What's your GPA? Those sorts of things. Do you have any discipline issues? They're really looking for that perfect student, which I think would be lovely if we all had and make our days easier, that's for sure. But to me, tech schools, in a very good way, not in the sort of stigmatized way that I think people look at it as, but in a very good way, gave kids who don't want to take AP classes or don't want to be academically, don't want to take academic classes for that long, to give them something to go learn and focus on while still getting the academics they need for graduation and for lifelong citizenry. So I'm nervous what's going to happen to that whole subset of kids if the tech schools want, want our top academic kids in there as well.
Yeah, I don't think, you're never going to change in one generation the college bias, right? That people go to high school, they go to, get a four-year degree, something after that. That's not, that's always been sort of, you know, the commonly accepted and respected track. And that's not what I'm suggesting. What I'm suggesting, and I think to add AP classes sort of dilutes the point, I agree with you, that you want to focus more purely on what makes a vocational school good, and that's teaching people practical things. And so when I'm talking about rebranding, I'm saying, okay, well, for example, a lot of the customers we work with work in exotic metals, let's say. So here's students are learning how to weld a certain set of metals. Well, let's just make it, push them into the exotic stuff, doesn't cost that much more money, equipment's the same, you just need different training, whatever. So, so then you could say, promote that, hey, look, we have students that are being taught to weld titanium, which is a unique skill set that a lot of companies in the 128 built need, you know, medical device companies and semiconductor companies, Varian, Varian and Gloucester, needs tons of people that do just that. And so you could say, okay, here's how, you know, when you get this skill set of exotic metal welding, then you can go work at Varian Vacuum, you can go work at Medtronics, and you can, you can, you can get a job where you're contributing to medical, you know, implants and people, you're contributing to semiconductors, these kind of things, so that you, you're not saying, hey, you have to go to college for four or six years to do this as an engineer, but you need, for every engineer, you need five technicians to help them.
So I guess, maybe I wasn't clear.
Okay.
I don't think we have a shortage of students who want to go learn how to do that.
I see.
Those students, however, are not getting into the, at least my eighth graders, I'm sure our eighth graders maybe do a little bit better with behavior and discipline and attendance, but my eighth graders are not being accepted into today's Massachusetts tech schools because actually the applications are so competitive that, and now they're going to add this other layer of academics. And so my question is, do you have any ideas or inclination, I should even ask, to help the Volk schools realize that there is, there are a chunk of students who would love to go weld, work on cars, beautician, whatever, other programs, culinary arts, whatever they do, but they can't because they haven't, they don't have an attendance record that's good enough for the paperwork.
Oh, I see.
So I don't, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a supply deficit for students who are looking to go to Volk schools. That's my, my personal, what I see going on in the application process.
Interesting.
Thanks.
And that's what the guy told us last, so I just didn't know if you had any thoughts to that.
Well, I mean, if you're offering AP classes, was your suggestion that by offering those more academic classes, that that was drawing a different crowd?
That their interest is to draw a different crowd.
Yeah, okay.
Instead of looking at kids who might want to weld, they're looking for kids who are going to make great students. Or who already are great students, I should say.
Yeah, so I think my first comment still applies. You have to change the, the thinking of it's a college bias, you know? If you're teaching AP anything, if you're teaching to an AP exam which is used to get college credit, so it seems like you're diluting the resources. If the resources are intended to teach a vocation, well, AP doesn't have much to do with that. You need to have good math skills, in certain cases, you need to have some science understanding in many cases, you know? So teach to that and devote those resources there, and you could be good at one thing, you can't be good at two or three things. And so I think that's where the mission statement comes in, pick the one thing, be clear about it, and even sometimes what you should say is what you're not going to do. You know, that, you know, when, when we work on either a departmental mission or a company wide mission, it's, these are the most important things we say is what we're not going to do. We're not going to devote resources to X or we're not going to sell the customer Y. Well, it's the same kind of thing. Your, your customer is the student. I'm going to serve just these students really, really, really well, instead of all these sort of well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
That was a very substantive answer.
Do you have any questions? Oh, Mr. Paul.
And these may be kind of simple, but I didn't need to ask them. Have you spoken with any current Whittier school administrators about your interests?
No, I haven't.
How about any current school board members?
No.
Familiar who the other board member is from Newburyport?
I looked up the name several weeks ago. I don't recall what it is.
Brett Murphy.
Yes.
He's also an NHS alum, as you are and as I am, so. Have you watched any of their meetings, just to get a gauge of the dynamics, how things get discussed, or what current issues are?
No, no, I have not.
Okay. They're quite concerned with enrollment, sustaining it, and how it's going to look for the future. There's some concern about whether, you know, their, their budget is going to be able to match what they're, they're predicting, so this is, I guess there's a lot of nuts and bolts involved, and I would just advise you to maybe check into some of that. I don't know when their next meeting is, but.
Good idea.
Yep. And I guess that's all I have to ask right now.
Thank you. Anything else?
Do you have any questions for us about what our expectations might be for?
Well, I mean, I can gauge some of this from your questions, but is there anything in particular that the school board thinks Whittier should be doing differently or better?
You turned that right around, didn't you?
I mean, I can certainly tell you what I think.
Yeah.
I would presume to speak for the school committee, but one of the areas that has always been a concern, and while it isn't, it's not at the top of the list anymore, we would want to keep it as a priority, is making sure that Newburyport kids are able to get in. Things are working more smoothly now than they have been in the past, but I think that's always been something that, that we're interested in. I personally would be interested on a more regular basis in hearing from the representatives, you know, maybe a couple of times a year. Sometimes get an annual report out, but it, but it would be very helpful to us, and would certainly be very helpful to me, to hear on a more regular basis, because I think that things are changing over there. I've seen a lot of changes over the last couple of years, and I'd like to sort of stay on top of that and make sure, as you do, that, that their curriculum is developing in a way that really serves the needs of both the community and industry out there. That's very interesting. I hadn't done a lot of thinking about that before you responded to my question. So those are some things, I think, that, that are sort of general concerns that I have that I would want to hear more about.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Mayor?
I also think that we've requested and have seen some improvements in this area of coming and reaching out to our eighth graders about the program and families. Originally, it was, you know, a very, very thin process, if I, if I may, and I think that, you know, Whittier has really grown and is a viable option for parents. And I don't have a lot of experience with several in the Middlesex County vocational technical schools, and I'm a big proponent of, of these programs. I think that they provide a really solid education as well as trades, but also it's important to understand that a large percentage of graduates go on to college, whether it's an associate's degree or on to college. They also have a 98%, I think, well, actually, I think last year it was closer to 100% MCAS pass rate. So, I mean, they still have to meet all of the regular high school education requirements as well as students need to meet their requirements for their particular trade. And they do a lot more highly technical skills, graphic, you know, arts and design and nursing and, as opposed to, you know, I think they let go of fashion design, I think they still tried, were trying to tweak cosmetology, but their culinary arts program is really solid. And, you know, I think it provides a great opportunity for certain families and kids in our community. And I think Bruce's comments are very important, that we continue to have students who want to go there and have access.
Yeah, well, one of the, from superintendent's perspective, and one of the things that I've had a conversation with Superintendent Lynch about is the fact that exactly as you described, the, the range of options for students from those who would go directly into employment all the way up to those that want to go on and get their PhD. And manufacturing offers so many options available. I think that what's incumbent upon in working, Whittier and Newburyport working together is to really be educating students in the community about all of the options that are available in that continuum. And the school committee has heard me talk about this before, and it's, it's something that we need to continue to kind of work on because I think there are so many options. And I think that the general community is not, they do not have the knowledge base to understand that students with the right skill set coming right out of high school can be making a lot of money.
Absolutely.
And that's a, that's sort of a, that's a hidden piece to all of this that I think that we need to bring out and show students. And it also, you know, we have a broad, not, not all students are cut out to go directly to college.
Yeah, right, exactly. You know, I keep thinking about the German or the Swiss model of teaching technical trades. They, not that we want to put students in tracks exactly, that's not American, really, right? We want to give a lot of options, but there's a clear progression, you know? You get in a, you get in the school and you study something, and then there's a internship waiting for you, and then you go do the specific thing, and you're the best at it. And let's say it's running a, you know, I hired a guy recently that's trained in Switzerland, you know, came up through that track, and he, he's the best in the world at grinding mirrors with a CNC machine, very precise skill that he needed. He built satellites, he built a couple of other things, but he was amazing at it. So we were lucky to get him. So, so if you drew that, that progression, that path of you do this, that, and the other thing, and then you can do this job where you can make parts for a satellite, if you drew the, connected the dots for people, you know, you might find the less people want to go to college, right? Because they don't know what to do next. The acceptance rate of college might go down, say, oh, I'm going to get an internship at, you know, NASA, and then I'm going to do this, and then I'll, I'll be in demand because I'll have this very unique skill set. So I think the college acceptance rate is kind of interesting. It sort of says people aren't, they're sort of stopping there and going on to doing something else to an extent.
Building on the skills.
Building on, okay, fair enough.
So, for example, there was a student who spoke at their annual meeting last year. He started in CAD and did incredibly well, and then received a, I think he did it, I don't remember where his internship was, but then ended up a full boat at UMass Lowell in engineering, and then went on to, now he's got his PhD out in California. And, you know, it's a great success. And that's a good track for some people, too, to go that way, because he had so much practical experience, it helped him along the way as he moved through his, you know, college education, so. And I think that's what's really exciting about a place like Whittier is that you have choices. You know, if you want to go into, you know, plumbing, electrician, you go on and get your business degree, and then you go and make a fortune.
Make your business.
Do plumbing and electrician and the kinds of skills that we, all of us need on a daily basis.
Absolutely. So I appreciate everyone's, you know, input and certainly hear the need to have more communication and hear about what's going on. So there's no, there's no argument against communication, so we're sure we'll work on that.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question?
No, I want to thank you for coming in.
My pleasure. Thanks for your time.
Just going to say that, but thank you for coming in. Thank you, Ben.
Pleasure. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I think it's even unlocked.
They've stopped locking this in.
All right. How would you like to proceed? We have two candidates for Whittier that have both come before us. It's possible that we would take a vote tonight. It is possible that we would hold off the vote till our next meeting. Do you want to, I think that this has been on our table for a couple of months now because we hadn't been able to get both candidates to come, but I'm sure that the superintendent, Ed Whittier, is waiting for us to move ahead. Is that fair to say?
I had a conversation with her when we were at the superintendent's conference and last month, and she asked me where we were in the process, and I explained to her that, you know, you had one more candidate to interview. So she knows that, but she is very much looking forward to having another representative from Newburyport to be on there, there on committee, so.
I'm prepared to take a vote tonight.
I guess I'm going to ask, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Hochheiser?
Yeah.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Menon? Ms. Cole?
I mean, I, my preference would be to have some more time to review materials for both candidates, but if the, will the committees to vote tonight, then I'll vote tonight.
All right. Let's do that then because I think both of our candidates, well, one of our candidates has been waiting for a long time, and the other one is, was here this evening, and I think to do justice to Whittier Committee, we should probably continue this evening. So the two candidates are Ben Fischera and Joseph Spalding. So I'm going to ask you, Mrs. Kennedy, to do a roll call, and would you please say either one name or the other?
Mr. Menon.
Mr. Fischera.
Ms. Sweeney.
Mr. Fischera.
Mr. Cole.
Joseph Spalding.
Mr. Kennedy. Mayor Holliday.
Mr. Fischera.
Mr. Hochheiser.
Mr. Fischera.
And Ms. Miller.
Ben Fischera.
Five for Mr. Fischera and one for Mr. Spalding.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spalding. I mean, Mr. Fischera, sorry, will be the next Whittier Voc Tech School Committee member from Newburyport. Thank you for that. Next up on our agenda is.
Can you just give me some direction as to if I need to proceed?
Sure.
To notify?
Oh, yes, both. Please, as soon as possible now that, and would you also let the superintendent of Whittier know? Thank you. Mrs. Kennedy, could your notes reflect that the superintendent will notify both candidates and the superintendent at Whittier, please? Thank you. Next up on our agenda is what is familiar and later start times. We had, as a committee, conversations about the process update at our retreat last week or the week before. I'm Glenns. And so we've asked the superintendent to give us an update as to the status quo up until this point, bearing in mind that this committee is not expecting a full report on later school start times until October. And this is what we agreed on last June in order to give the schools ample time to meet and discuss the issue. As you all know, teachers have limited availability during the summer, so it wasn't our intent to have a full report out to you this evening. We realize that some schools right now have met more frequently than others. I would like to say that the superintendent sent out at the end of the last school year a request that principals set up committees within their schools. We have also, as a school committee, been asked how we would like that information to be disseminated back to us. We have suggested PowerPoint presentation in October. So this by no means is on a back burner. It's very much on a front burner, and we are moving forward with the gathering of information vis a vis committees at each school. So I'm going to give this to you, Superintendent.
I don't have too much to add to that. As we did with the school committee retreat, the leadership team met a week, a week ago today, and this was one of the items that we talked about. It was out of that discussion that my request came forward to the school committee for what were the expectations of the school committee in terms of the deliverables that you were looking for. And I, four, I think four of you responded in terms of Nick had said his preference would be a PowerPoint with key issues and solutions, and spreadsheets or work docs with supporting data, and there seemed to be support. What I have suggested to the leadership team is that they agree on the format and that they all present in the same manner, just so that it will be, so it makes sense. So that's what they're going to be working on. They are at various places. Some have had staff that's been in and has been willing to work over the summer. Some have decided they're waiting really until staff is back next week. So it's been up to the building principals to do that. I have been asked to provide them a couple of overarching issues came up where they wanted central office involvement, so I will be pulling that information together for data that they're seeking. But I think it's very important that each building come forward with the concerns that they had and how, and the proposed solutions that they're coming forward with. And I think that it's really important to the overall process to make sure that we hear what is germane to each building because the issues, the issues at the high school are different than the issues at Brezner and Mullen and Middle as well. So that's really where we are at this point. They are aware of the expectations for the October meeting, and I have every belief that that data will come forward to you at that time.
Just a question. Has the data from the survey been disseminated, and is there any feedback on whether it's been useful?
The data has been sent out to all of the, the data that the, the one that I shared with the school committee, yes, that has been disseminated to everyone. I have, we have not had a discussion as a whole group yet, but that's going to be on a leadership team meeting in September. So that's one of the things that we will be discussing on a future agenda. But all of them have received that data. They know that they're going to be bringing it back to the team that they're working with. And I do, I did have additional copies if anybody needed them, but I think you've all received that in electronic format, correct?
Sure.
Is there anyone else?
So your, again, your expectation is that by the beginning of the school year, if not maybe by our first meeting, those committees will be organized in your school, the ones that don't have them yet?
Yeah, I mean, they all have, all the principals have an idea. Some places ask for volunteers, you know, some were twisting arms to volunteer, but this was a data Gail Phillips had put this together based on both paper surveys and the electronic surveys.
Could I just ask that we keep this on the agenda for the school committee meetings? Because I'd like a process update before we have the October update, late October update. Just to hear how the process is going, and that would be really useful.
Who did?
Susan, is the plan for these committees, they're going to be in-house or are they inviting, like, parents and people?
I mean, I think it's been a mixed bag. Some have invited parents. Again, the purpose, my understanding from the school committee's directive was, it was really for the schools to identify what the issues were and for them to come back with solutions. Some of them have opened it up to parents. I don't know if everyone's done that or not. The first time that I met with all of my leadership team was on a week ago Monday. So I don't, I don't know.
I think it's a good suggestion to make.
Yeah. I actually have done that, Bruce. When I sent it out, I said to people, this does not preclude the fact that you shouldn't reach out to the community or to parents.
Okay, good. I appreciate that.
I think that's a good idea. We will keep it on the agenda as we need to form our agenda each time. We'll be sure it's on there. Item number six, the, we had a discussion last year a couple of times with Mr. Parent at the high school after we were approached by a group of students to take a look at our philosophy of class rank at the high school. And I'm going to let the superintendent talk about and update in how, where we are at this point.
This came up because there were a group of students who were very concerned about the level of angst that they saw when class ranks were released and that it caused a lot of anxiety in students that, and you can recall the presentation that the students made, that they really felt that it didn't serve a good purpose and that the cons were much more than the pros. So they did a survey last year of the juniors and seniors, and a much larger, I shouldn't say much larger, a larger percentage of students felt that they wanted to omit class rank when they polled the juniors and seniors last year. So it, this is, that started to get the ball rolling. Mr. Parent worked with that group of students. They've outlined a number of possible options, and I will talk about those. This very much is a work in progress. Class rank is in place for the coming school year. They are looking to, for the class, our current juniors for this school year, that's when they are looking to eliminate class rank, to, it would be in 2019, in the 1819 school year. This was discussed at two parent alliance meetings. It needs to be rolled out further to students, and this is the part that's still the work in progress. Typically, rankings occur in February. So they've talked about what are some of the issues involved. One of them is some of the scholarships are tied to the valedictorian and the salutatorian, and that the high school would need to work with those scholarship committees about perhaps changing the language, such as perhaps going with, they could do something with the language like having a GPA that is, you know, 3.8 or higher. Students could be considered for that rather than a specific rank within the class. That's one option that's available. And the students, one of the students' major concerns was that it's really, class rank has become meaningless at the college level because when you look at the level of rigor at each high school, it's different. So that it's, it's really comparing apples and oranges. So colleges are not putting as much weight as they used to on class rank. A few more conversations with students, things like students should really be taking AP classes because they love the subject area, not to have a better class rank. Some teachers struggle with a student who might be experiencing some social, emotional difficulties, who might require some accommodations. How do you fairly weigh that if, you know, this confusion between what's fair and what's equal, and that doing away with class rank might help teachers to be able to make those accommodations a little bit easier? Rank is so highly competitive, and that was the piece that the students kept emphasizing with Mr. Parent, is that they real, the stress level of it. About, I checked with Patricia Black, Doctor Director of Guidance, today. She said right now it's about 50/50 in North Shore schools. She did a survey last year as to who is still going with class rank and who has eliminated it. She said, she said her belief is that the trend is really moving away from it. And then I talked with Mr. Parent about what some of the options might be if we were to do about, if we were to do away with class rank. He said there are a number of things that could be done. You could recognize the top 10 students alphabetically based on GPAs because GPAs still happen, but you wouldn't necessarily have to say this is number one and this is number, you know, number eight. Students could select their graduation speaker from among the teachers in their building instead of doing the number one and the number two as the valedictorian and the salutatorian. Students could vote on their own students. They could ask a teacher to speak. There are a variety of things that schools do. So he said he's been looking at all the different things that schools do and that he would be happy to come back to the school committee with what he finally ends up with and what he's going to recommend. But that's where we are at this point. Those are all the things that are under consideration.
Are those options exclusive of one another?
No, not necessarily. No, no, they're.
They all sounded like good ideas.
They're options. And I think there are a number of ways to go. There are a lot of positive, positive things around this. I can tell you that in my conversations with Andy Egmont, this is a huge concern to Andy as the Director of Youth Services here in Newburyport in terms of the stress level on students and in terms of the emphasis on class rank and the stress that that really does put on kids, and she would really like to see that change. So she'd also be willing to come in and talk to you at any point because she hears that from students. Those are, those are, that's a sort of a summary of where we are right now, but.
And I do recall, I believe, that Mr. Parent said that he was going to check with the scholarship committees, the people giving the scholarships. Has that occurred yet?
He has talked, he has talked with some of them, yes, about, but he would, they would need to very specifically talk with any of the scholarship committees in particular, those that identify valedictorian and salutatorian.
Yes.
And he would like to provide some options for scholarship members.
Yeah, he had, he had actually given us a grid, I think, two weeks after we made that request for that meeting. I think the other thing that's relevant to this, though, is the speakers at graduation, which have been traditionally valedictorian, salutatorian. I think it's going to be important to identify how those will be selected.
Seems like that's part of the plan, and there are a couple of options. Is part of his plan also to get the teachers and students together to discuss this, options?
They have. I asked, I didn't speak to Mr. Parent specifically about the teachers, but I did. In my conversation with Ms. Blackstock, I did ask her that, and she said yes. She said that there had been major discussion among the faculty, and the faculty was in support of eliminating class rank.
But I'm looking also for input from students?
Well, I think that that was the survey. That was done.
Okay.
That's what he was looking at, was the data from that survey.
Mr. Menon?
Yeah, I guess I just have three comments. One is that I am encouraged and would agree with Patricia's assessment that, you know, I suspect, you know, that it's 50/50 now in the direction it's heading in. I suspect that if you took that survey five years ago, it wouldn't have been 50/50. So I think we should be heading in that direction. The second is that, you know, I sort of agree with Andy Egmont and that our emphasis really with students should be on doing your best, not getting the highest grade, that they really should be focused on doing their best, and that's what I think we should really be encouraging. And finally, I just wonder if there's any way when this whole thing is resolved, either through, you know, a newspaper article or posting on the website or even directly contacting those students who initiated this movement to let them know what has finally happened?
That's a, that's a good place.
I want to keep them involved and even a larger group, so. Anything further on that?
I guess I'm confused because I don't know whether or not we voted for this already and then we're just, are we moving forward on this? Are we still, like, going to have a vote? Because a couple of weeks ago, I thought we hadn't decided anything, and then I thought last week people said that we had decided this and we're moving forward on this. But now it sounds like we're still going to have a vote?
I mean, my understanding was that we gave it to Mike Parent to present to us what he wants to do, what he's, what he's going to recommend, that we want him looking at this. And, you know, I certainly haven't kept it any secret, what I feel about it, but.
But we haven't voted on this. But we haven't voted on this?
No.
Okay. And is there, is there a timeline for that? Like when we will have to do that or when we're going to do that?
Well, I think I, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but I think what Susan just said, the current, this year's incoming seniors already know their ranks.
Yep.
We don't give ranks to juniors until February. So, somewhere in that timeframe, I would assume that we need to make some sort of a determination. Is that fair?
No.
Are, are people in the school operating under the thought that they're going to have to sell this one way or the other? Is that like they're coming to present, Mike's coming to present his thinking, not knowing what we're thinking? Or are they...
Well, I think what Susan just said was that, that's why I asked you that question two different ways. Are the teachers involved in this decision? Are they sitting down and talking? And also, are the, are the students still involved in this decision? And I think some of it will, will bear reference on the people giving the scholarships, particularly the ones that, that use class rank as a, as a very high criteria for that. So, I think this committee is looking for information from the people that best can give it to us. And we will be looking at a recommendation.
To Mr. Menon's point, the students who initially brought this forward to the school committee have graduated.
Yeah, I know that.
And, and so I think that through our Naviance connection, we'll be able to contact those students.
Oh, I think that's great.
But I think that's a great suggestion, that we at least let them know where we end up with this. Because that's, when something is student-initiated and we end up finally having closure on it, I think it's important to let them.
Just to sort of, to follow on what Dave was saying, I mean, I have had the impression all along that it's really clear that we want Mike to explore, how do you eliminate class rank and what do you have to put in place to address these other issues. I don't think Mike is confused at all about what we would really like to see. And I think he's going to be coming back with a comprehensive recommendation to address those issues.
Yeah, these, these were options that he's still exploring. And that's what, that's how I started out by saying that this is still a work in progress. But I definitely think that, that personally, I would be comfortable with having decisions made around this specifically before February. Because we don't want to, we don't want to, if, if this is something that we want to eliminate, then we want to make sure that we do it before that, that rolls around. And we want to have it in place. And, you know, I think it's, it's incumbent upon high school administration to make sure that the students, the rising juniors to seniors, know what the expectations are for their senior year.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, it's, as I mentioned to Mr. Fischera, it takes time to change culture. I recognize that. But I, I feel like since we have raised this issue, there's been incremental but steady progress in addressing it and addressing it in a way that I think I'm going to really be able to support. So, I guess we should have it sooner.
What is, what can, may I ask you if you know what the next steps are for the high school?
I think, I think it is the conversations with the scholarship folks. And I think that that's, I didn't ask Mr. Parent the number of scholarships that are involved. I certainly can find that out. I think that's part of it. I think it's also taking a look at what are going to be the options for graduation speakers and really kind of, you know, he's got to come forward with some recommendations. And I think that he'll, you know, student council probably will be involved. I think he'll have continued conversations with the parent alliance around this, you know, his school council. I mean, I think all of those.
So, so I guess what I would like for our, our committee anyway is to have a couple of updates in the interim, just so that we keep it on our agenda. We understand where we are in the process with an idea toward letting Mr. Parent know that we would like this well before February. So, if we could maybe schedule an update twice in the fall. Mr. Cole?
Yeah, maybe with the idea that, that the update in February is effectively an amendment to the Clipper Compass for school year 18 and 19.
Great suggestion.
And is that a vote we would take?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's...
I guess I'm going back to Mr. Hawkeye.
I think that's where a vote is relevant. There's, there's too many things that haven't been tied up to be thinking about a vote right now. And, and I, and I do think the, the fat, the, the valedictorian and salutatorian's graduation speeches are essential. And, and I think that we want to be able to have a good process that's fair. And so it doesn't turn into a popularity contest, but maybe involves a mix of educators, staff, similar to how maybe students are selected to one of the honor societies.
Mr. Hawkeye?
I, I guess my point, I don't know if I was clear enough before, but if the stress levels are that high that teachers, administrators, students and youth services are concerned about it, I'd just as soon take a vote on the end goal as soon as possible, worry about figuring out the process later, which is what, I guess what I was alluding to. Like we can figure out how to do speeches and whether or not we're going to lose a couple, as unfortunate would be, potentially lose a couple of scholarships after we decide and let it, it sounds to me like hundreds of kids take a deep breath and not be nervous about class rank. So, I guess they'll just, I personally see those as two separate, like if they're moving forward on how to do it, whether, as opposed to whether or not to do it, it's just a different process.
Haven't the ranks already been distributed, though?
Not until February.
For the juniors?
For this year's juniors class.
Juniors.
The seniors have them.
So, seniors have them. So, seniors are the next bunch. So, you're going to tell me you're concerned about the juniors but not the seniors?
Well, if the seniors have it.
Yeah.
Then I can't do anything about that.
Okay, so...
I'm worried, I'm thinking about the kids right now. We're thinking about what is my class rank going to be? And they're starting to get nervous about it.
Well, maybe they're not, though. How can you make that assumption?
I'm not making that assumption. I'm hearing that from Susan, who says she's talked to a number of people who said that it's a major source of stress in our students' lives.
Okay. But I, I think it will be a relief if we continue our process and let high school administration write relevant policy that gets inserted into the Clipper Compass. If we want to move that soon, forward sooner, then maybe February is too late. Maybe we do it sooner than that. But, but I, I really think that it's their purview to do that. And, you know, we can recommend that it happens sooner. But I don't, you know, I, I don't want to just, I guess I respect what's being, what I'm hearing, but I don't think, I don't want to move on false assumptions. I also don't want to take scholarship money from a deserving student. So, I think we have to balance things.
A suggestion. A suggestion I would make is that I will report back at the next, let me talk with Mr. Parent, and I will report back at the next school committee meeting and hopefully with a timeframe for when he thinks it's viable and how he would like to move forward. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
So, we'll put that on our agenda for the next meeting as well. Anything further?
Just that I'm really encouraged at the depth and breadth of the conversation that's happening around this. So, I, please pass that on to Mike.
Thank you. So, is there anything else about that? Susan?
Let me just make sure I covered all of my notes. No, I think that's it.
Thank you. If anybody has any further questions, let me know and I'll get them to Susan or Mike. Summer 2017 professional development update, otherwise known as the Assistant Superintendent's Report. I don't know why it doesn't say that on here, but...
That's okay.
It's summer.
It's summer. That's right. Yes, our teachers participated in quite a bit of professional development offered by the district this summer. I'll go through them and just briefly give you a little explanation of what they were about. One of the courses was on co-teaching. This was something that the teachers had requested last year, that they were interested in some co-teaching professional development. And this has been a very lively course. The teachers were very actively involved. Judy Delucia was here as our consultant and she actually put all of our teachers in the students' place. And they were up and moving and active and going. And she was modeling everything that she was teaching constantly with them. And it was very fun to see the teachers.
Just a quick question. Can you sort of demographically describe who participated? You know, in terms of teachers who've been here a long time, new teachers, elementary?
Right. Yes.
Can you tell me who?
I can.
Just demographically.
Will we do that?
Yes.
Will you define co-teaching?
I sure will.
I just want to go backwards so there's clarity.
So, first of all, you know, there are various strategies that can be used for co-teaching. When two teachers are in a classroom, teaching at the same time, our goal in the district when we have co-teaching situations for our students would be that our students don't know who might be the specialist and who is the regular classroom teacher, that they share the responsibility in the classroom in such a way that students would just identify with both teachers as teachers in the classroom. So, you may have a special education teacher in the classroom and the core content teacher in the classroom. You may have another support service teacher in the classroom. You may have an occupational therapist or a physical therapist or a speech therapist in the classroom, co-teaching with the content teacher. And there are several different models that can be used for co-teaching, all effective, but helping our teachers really understand what is most appropriate at what time for what objectives that you have in the classroom. The participants in the class really varied. I'm glad you asked that question, Bruce, because we had some veteran co-teachers that were in the class. We had some brand-new teachers. We had some support service specialists. We had some teachers that felt like we're doing a pretty good job co-teaching, but we know we could do better. So, it really ran a wide continuum. I think one of the things that was a big moment in the class was a pair of more veteran co-teachers who had been co-teaching together for some time, that I think it was maybe after the second session who had kind of this eureka moment of, I'm not sure we've been doing as good as we could do in this. And they started to realize the things that needed to change and were very energized by this new understanding about how it could be and what it really should be for the students. So, we're going to continue that work with Judy throughout the year. She's going to come in in a coaching basis for the teachers who participated in the class this summer. They started in June and they just finished in August. They just finished the course up last week. And, and she's going to come in and observe in their classrooms and work with them as they're implementing some of the new strategies that they've learned. She's also been working with some of our principals, helping our principals with thinking about scheduling a little differently so that we can provide more opportunities for co-teaching experiences in the classroom. And looking at their current structures in the buildings and examining what's really working well and what, what might benefit from a different lens. And so, that's been good. It's been a very positive experience.
May I ask you if the, if there were any administrators in attendance or there would be a struggle with communication over the new...
No, but what was really good about this, there weren't any administrators who took the full course. But Judy came in and met with the entire leadership team before the course was offered. So, that every administrator in the district would have an understanding of what was going to be taught, what the focus of the course was going to be, and made herself available to any of them that may want to work with her as well as follow-ups. So, that's how some of the consulting that she's done with some of our principals has happened.
We did have principals who also showed up to some of the classes to...
Oh, they definitely came and they observed. And on the last day, most of our principals went because teachers were doing their final projects and they wanted to present them. And we had most of our administrative team there on the final day.
Were represented in terms of this course.
Right. They were. K through 12 were represented in the course. And yeah, it was, it was very good. It was fun. You know, she, she used some activators. She did some things that would get kids up and moving, different way to group kids, you know, definitely incorporated as much as a multiple intelligence model as you could do in a classroom to try to reach all of your learners. It was very funny to see people walking around using hand signals to find other people or to be humming a song to find the other members of their group. And people who kind of typically are very serious laughing and just seeing what fun there can be in using some of these strategies in a classroom. So, it, it was good.
And where is Judy from?
She is from Seacoast Consultants.
She's former superintendent at Grade Alliance Vocational Schools.
Yes, she is.
Yep, I, I know Judy.
You know Judy. You knew what a character she is.
Yeah.
She's got a big personality, big personality. And she, yeah, she did a nice job. Our teachers really responded well.
Angela?
Yes.
Is co-teaching our predominant model for providing services across?
I would say predominant, yes. Because, you know, we work towards an inclusion model whenever possible.
Okay.
And so to do the best job we can with inclusion, co-teaching is a great support for that.
So, are there still grade levels where we're doing more of a pull-out?
No, we're not. I wouldn't say with our general special education population, majority of those students are serviced in an inclusion model in the classroom. Our pull-out services are for very specific services that might be offered. And so, you know, you've heard Christina come and talk to you about some of our, you know, our programs that have acronym models to them. And some of our students might spend a portion of the day in a very specific directed instruction, say it might be a language-based classroom for a portion of the day, and then they're included in, in the rest of the day. So, I, I would say that that is our focus. That's certainly our philosophy, that we want to be able to include our students in the regular classroom whenever possible, but with the supports that are needed so they can be successful. Is that, that all for that class?
Moving on.
Okay. All right. The next class is a return course from last summer because it went over so well. There was a request to do it again this summer. And that was our adolescent literacy class. And this course is offered to our middle and high school teachers. And this year, the course really focused on disciplinary literacy. And I was so excited to see the wide range of teachers that we had participate in the class this year. And it got really good reviews. But we had teachers representing math, science, history, English, and the performing arts in the course this summer. And really were able to feed off of one another, learned about all the different ways that literacy can be taught in a variety of content areas. They learned a lot about using text protocols in exploring the depth of a text. And as a matter of fact, we just started our new teacher orientation. And a couple of our mentor leaders had participated in the class last year. And right away said, you know, we're going to read a piece of text. Let's use protocol with this, with our mentors today during the training. And it was very successful. So, we'd like to keep that going. Last year, Emily Russen followed up the work from the summer workshop by running a year-long study group that our teachers participated in. And some of the feedback from that said that it was some of the highest quality professional development that they had ever experienced. So, we hope to continue that work. I think, you know, as you know, the literacy standards are across the disciplines now. There is a literacy expectation in every discipline. And I think that was a little hard for content teachers to wrap their heads around at the beginning. And I think it's becoming clearer and clearer that when you're talking to a science teacher and you're talking about teaching literacy, you're talking about teaching the literacy of science. You don't have to teach them paragraph structure in the science class, although it would be nice if on their lab reports, they're writing a good paragraph. But that's not really what your focus is. It's about learning how to read informational text. It's about how to write technical writing that would apply to the subject. And so I think teachers are really starting to understand that a little bit more. I think this course has really helped a lot with that. And I think Emily's supports have also been very beneficial in this area. been very beneficial in this area. We offered an advanced responsive classroom course for our elementary teachers this year. Many of our, most of our elementary teachers have participated in the basic responsive classroom coursework at this point and so this was sort of the, you know, the more advanced version for those teachers, where you go from here, how you take that work further. And for those of you who aren't familiar with responsive classroom, it is part of our affective education programming here for our youngest students and it's a way for us to build strong relationships between the adults and the students in the building. Culture and climate are built into what we do in the responsive, the asset model is built right into responsive classroom. And at our youngest age, it's really when we teach them about believing in themselves, which ultimately leads to some of our prevention work as the students get older, that's what we build off of, so.
Angela, are all the teachers in pre-K3 using responsive classroom? Is it a requirement for us?
Yes, everybody starts their day with a minimum of a morning meeting, all the way through grade five.
So, the training is a requirement?
The training was, the initial training was a requirement.
Right.
And now taking it to the more advanced is up to the teachers, you know, if they'd like to. We also are continuing our work in the district around expanding our understanding of sheltered English immersion. You hear us talk about SEI and that is for English language learners, understanding the WITA standards, which all of our strategies around teaching English language learners are based on. And so this summer, we offered an introduction into WITA and this is a 15-hour PDP class for our teachers. It allows teachers who are renewing their licensure to meet the requirements that the state has set around staying current with these practices. But it was interesting because we've also been offering in the district the full SEI endorsement class. We've offered that for the last several years and we're offering another section of that this fall, hosting it here in Newburyport. And some of our teachers that took the full SEI immersion class participated in the intro to WITA because they enjoyed the full SEI class so much and wanted to continue their learning around that. So, I thought that spoke volumes, I was really happy to hear that we had some that participated in both. The same instructor that worked with us around this introduction to WITA course is also working with our ESL teachers, our teachers who teach specifically our ELL students this year. And she is helping them with their curriculum mapping, about mapping a guaranteed and viable curriculum for the different levels of RLs in the district. So, you know, we have students who come in who are newcomers, we have students that we look at in levels one and two, we look at levels three and four, and then we look at our students that we're consulting with as we take them on. So, that's been pretty exciting work, they started that last year with her and then they worked over the summer in some summer curriculum work and then they will continue, they're working into next year around that. So we've got some good things happening there. We had a really nice few days of successful workshop time with our high school science teachers on doing some curriculum planning. So they worked three days together with two consultants from the Boston Public Schools, which Aaron Hobbs had seen at the National Science Conference and really liked what they had presented. And as you know, we have new science standards, but the high school is the last to adopt them because until they, until our high-stake tests catch up at the high school level, they're holding off on adoption of the new standards. And so, we're in the process of transitioning. So the way that we decided to start was with process standards and that's what our high school teachers worked on during this time, was looking at what the process standards are, which are how we process the information of science and what our instructional methods are to bring our students to that. And so they were looking at their current curriculum and the ways to start to integrate the process standards into that. And they were going to continue that work in through, throughout the school year this year.
When will it be mandated that we institute a science standard?
Um, we don't know that yet.
Okay.
You know, it really depends.
So you're not working under a deadline?
No, we're not working under a deadline, but we've started this process, we started a couple of years ago when we were starting with our other teachers, at least asking our high school teachers to become familiar and to start to do a crosswalk. And when I say crosswalk, taking the current standards, looking at the new standards, see what's in common in those two documents and what's different. And, and the process, you know, I feel like we have very strong content teachers in our science department at the high school. And I think the thing that is going to be the biggest shift for them is some of the process standards. And so that's, and I think they agree with that. And so they started to look at that and see ways that they might start that integration process now with their current units of study.
Thank you.
And we're all done, there's no more.
No way, I just meant to answer.
Okay.
That you're not under a deadline, I didn't.
Yeah, no, that's good. We also had a technology fitness camp this summer, which was really kind of fun, where teachers could choose, it ran for five days and there were morning and afternoon workshops that ran throughout those five days and teachers could choose to participate in as much as they wanted to during the fitness camp, just to kind of boost their skills or to learn new things. And, and we had teachers who did all of that, you know, some who came just one day and said, I'm really interested in what's being offered on this day and others, I don't think we had anybody that did the whole five days this year. But the workshops really varied, they went from a very beginner's level of teachers who might just be starting, say with Google Classroom and wanted to learn how to set up a Google Classroom or to get going with that with much more advanced skills. So people just were able to, teachers were able to pick and choose what they needed and what they wanted to participate in and they received credits accordingly to whatever it was that they did during that time. We also had teachers who worked much more independently on math professional development. One of the things that Eureka Math has put out is a series of Teach Eureka videos and these are a video series, they're professional development series that have about 18 videos available to teachers at each grade level that they may, that they might teach. And so, this was, we put this out as a challenge for the summer, where you have a little bit of extra time to take the challenge, take the video challenge. And the video challenge was that interested teachers would choose 12 of the 18 videos at their level, they would participate in the professional development around the videos. Liz Kinsley wrote a, it was a focused reflection chart that they would complete while viewing the videos and after the videos. And really the whole objective around this was just to help the teachers strengthen their skills and strategies and to deepen their understanding of the math that they're teaching on a regular basis and the variety of strategies that they can use to reach their students. We had really good participation in this over the summer, we offered it during the school year and we only had a couple of teachers participate during the school year. And because it's time-consuming, you know, the videos are, they vary in length, but the teachers really enjoyed doing it during, doing it during the summer where they could do it at their own pace, they could take the time to really reflect and think about how to incorporate their new learning into what they're doing. And then lastly, we started our new teacher orientation today and we will continue with two days of professional development on tomorrow and Wednesday with our teachers. We have a really nice group of both mentor, new teachers and the mentors that are going to be working with them. I think we had a successful start today.
Very good.
With that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Strategic plan review.
Okay.
Superintendent, what's known as the superintendent's review.
I just want to bring you an update and I want to tie this into the leadership retreat that I, as I said to you, we had a week ago today. And we, the leadership team talked about the areas of focus for the upcoming year in the strategic plan and really had an extended discussion about whether or not we could continue the work of some of the PLCs that they had done last year or should we move to some of the new action plans. So we really had a, had a very collaborative discussion and the decisions were, the final decisions were that each school was going to take an approach to identifying the PLC topics that they felt fit at their building level, which was a combination of some that would continue from last year into this year because there was more learning to be done and that some of the new, all of the new options would be offered as well. One of the other things that came out of the discussion was a way to sort of reorganize our own leadership team meetings. And what we ended up deciding is that the leadership team is going to meet in its entirety once a month, but we are going to have working groups on the off weeks. And working groups right now, we know that these will, will change as the year goes on and that will be added, well, some will drop off and we'll be adding some new ones. But I'm just going to give you a sample of a few of them, they are PLC protocols, how will we be monitoring our progress there, PBIS, Alice and safety training, as we, I'm going to roll, we're going to be rolling that out to the entire district this year. So how will go about that? Actually, the, for the 12 meetings that we're going to have on, through the leadership team, what is going to be the structure for those and in terms of the communication around those, what will be the communication also around the working groups? And how will we keep everybody in the loop if we're not meeting, if we're only meeting as a big group on a monthly basis? So we're coming up with it.
Will each group have a goal or?
Yeah, yes, or more than one in some cases.
No, I, okay.
Yes. One of the other things that came out, which was to my delight, is that they really thought, they want me to bring forward to Peter, that they'd like to have, you know, typically Peter and I will meet on an as-needed basis, Peter Hill, the president of the teachers' group, and they really wanted to expand that, to have maybe a couple more teachers come with Peter and a couple more administrators, to just really work on just communication and relations and to keep a positive track going. And then the other group, and I love the name of this one, Curriculum and Professional Development Marketing. So, those are, those are the things that we want to, want to be working on. You know, some of them are going to be really short-lived. PLC protocols, that's probably one, maybe two meetings at the most and they'll end. We know other things are going to be coming along to replace it. So I'll keep you posted as, as we move along, but this really, it was a great discussion. The other, the other sort of big thing that's also tied to the strategic plan is that I have shared with you in the past that we've been working with Michael Eaton in terms of the leadership team and in working to foster greater collaboration among the leadership team. And I think that coming up with this, these decisions was a good example of moving forward in that, in that area, that we are working more collaboratively, we're going to be continuing that work. I will have more specifics on what that will look like within the next month for you.
Great, thank you. That's great.
That one last thing is that we will be doing a fairly big during the month of September, we'll be rolling out, sending these home to each household, talking with parents and getting more information out about the strategic plan itself, so.
Are we, are you choosing a new strategy to work on? Last year we did strategy one and seven.
We're keeping that, but we are getting into the, if you'll remember, I shared this document with you, shared a couple of them with you, the kind of the five-year plan, the rollout, the action plans, so that.
But I, I just, it's easier for me if you just tell me.
Well, I mean, I can.
I know. Like, but you're not dropping the work that was done.
No, we are not dropping.
Continuing and enhancing and.
We are continuing the work that has been started. As I said, some of the PLC work has come to a natural end and new work will take its place and in some areas, there's more work that needs to be done. So, we will continue that.
It's spiraling.
It is, yeah.
Great.
So, that's an update.
I don't think we've had any, did you want to?
I just wanted to make a correction, yeah, can I just correct something? It was just Nancy, Assistant Extraordinaire, texted me and said, we did have teachers who did all five days, so I want those teachers to get their gratification.
Thank you teachers, yes. Thank you teachers.
There you go.
All right, I don't think we had any subcommittee meetings since the last time we met.
Just two questions real quick about the strategic plan, thanks. Two of the things we had talked about last year, one of them had started when you guys said we were going to share the work of the PLCs and they were going to be like an accessible doc and I know they were up for a while and then went away and you guys were working on format, is that coming back?
That's this work group, the work group that I said PLC, the protocols and the.
That's the marketing one, is that what you're saying?
No.
Oh, that's the protocol.
Yeah, I think it's going to come out of there.
Share the minutes of your meetings, okay. The other thing we talked about at some length, both in the committee and then after the plan was finalized, was the idea of, like when you say PLCs, specifically they start with student data and they're driven by student data. And while there's a wealth of things that teachers could be interested in, you guys have talked about moving towards that and I don't know if that's, that's still a goal.
I think, I think it's all tied to student data, I think it's more significant in some areas that we're working in than others, it's much more tangible. I mean, when we're talking about some of the, well, the big discussions that we had last Monday, is the whole area of social emotional learning and how you measure that. And there's a lot of discussion, as you probably know from the blogs that you pay attention to, there's a lot of discussion going on about how you can measure that effectively now and that's one of the things we're certainly taking a look at because it's, it's, there's not, it's not like you can measure the growth in some of the optional state easily.
Absolutely. And then we, but you guys were also talking about the other one, the teaching and learning and why, why, why somebody would reinvent a strategy or a structure that we have, like what data do we have that says isn't working, needs to be reinvented, what would the reinvention be and is that working? That's part of the process.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we framed it quite that way, but I, but yes, I do think that we're, that that's going to be explored and, and measured. I do think it does come down to both the protocols and, and in some ways to the marketing. So I think you're, you're right about that because I think it's, it is first of all, identifying the process that you have and then being able to communicate that out. And we had a lot of conversation about the fact that smaller working groups allowed for easier communication, but one of the concerns, rightly so, is that if, you know, three principals and a central office person are working on something, it's really important that the data that they're using, that the conclusions that they come to and the process that they put in place is then communicated out to the rest of the leadership team and that, that directions for what they, what everybody else has to do with it is really important. So I think that those two groups are going to certainly intersect and could actually come together at some point. So, those are, those are good points to make, David.
And if I could just add to that, I think, you know, David, what you're referring to is a cycle of implementation and we're just getting to a point where we can implement. You know, last year we talked a lot about delving into what each of those things meant to us, what it could look like in our buildings and now I do think we are at a point where we're ready to start an implementation process. And absolutely, you know, we'll be looking at the data that's associated to the implementation and then refining implementation as we go along.
You know, we talked a lot about like student-facing work. So, you know, it's one thing for teachers to be interested in this, it's another thing for it to be showing up at the student's desk during the day and what that looks like. what that looks like.
And also, you know, being able to demonstrate.
You'd be surprised, you'd be shaking your head, you'd be surprised the amount of things that I have found schools work on that never make it to the students.
But, yeah, you're talking about measurable progress in terms of how have, for example, instructional practices changed, whereas the innovation come in. That's, that's just one example. That's just one example.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can, we can report back later on in the year as we get moving forward.
That'd be great.
Anything else? Anything further?
Yes.
I don't think any of our subcommittees have met, so we don't have a report. But would you like to say a few words?
I would. I, um, unfortunately, we've been here a little too often over the last several years where people's lives change and they have to move on. And I would just like probably to thank you, Christine, for your wonderful role as a member of the school committee, what you have contributed. I think you have been a member who has listened a lot. You've been very quiet, but every time you've had something to offer, it's been incredibly meaningful. I appreciate your advocacy for those special needs and the work that you've tried to do in terms of working with that particular group and updating us on that. I think you were an amazing contributor to the policy committee, and I think everyone recognized that role you played on those Saturday mornings where I'm sure you had other things to do besides for hours in a policy subgroup. But I thank you very much for your work, your expertise and your compassion you brought to your job. I wish you the best of life in Amesbury. I'm sorry you're moving over the bridge, but, you know, these things do happen and, you know, we'll see you at a football game. No, I'm okay. But thank you. No, I mean it from, I really do. I really appreciate everything you've contributed to this committee. You will be missed.
Thank you. It's been a wonderful experience.
I'm going to second that, too. Thank you so much for your service, and we will miss you. And, but we all wish you the best, just the best. And you're only a phone call in a river away, so thanks.
Do you have a letter? I sent you an email tonight. Okay, that's fine. I just, you know, I want to keep this process moving forward, and not that you're going to be easy to replace by any means, but we just, we need to move this process forward. So, thank you. Best of luck.
I'm going to make a motion, and you can second it. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.